The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
I now call the November 18th, 2021 administrative briefing and work session on the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I will now ask the school board attorney to explain the rules of this work session.
Thank you Chair Cummings. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form handed to the school board secretary. After the Board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the secretary will call speakers' names in the order received. At the podium, speakers are asked to state their full name and address and to spell their last names. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you. For the record, I did want to state that all the five Board members are present for this meeting. Ms. Thor is appearing telephonically as well. We'll now begin the work session with the superintendent's administrative briefing.
Good morning Chair Cummings, members of the Board. Nice to see you all today. I do not have any items for the briefing so we can continue on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. So our first order of business is stop loss enrollment. That's going to be Ms. Lori Lively.
Good morning Chair Cummings, Board members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Ms. Prestapino. We are here today to go over the stop-loss renewal. We had talked about in the summer that we would be getting renewal figures in October. We are also going to go over a claims update. Sharon Leach, our actuary, is not available to be here today. Thomas Bus with Gallagher will go over the actuarial analysis with us. And just to give you a recap on how our annual enrollment went this year, it went very well considering we still are practicing some level of social distancing. Thank you to Gallagher's office for all the support. They help us with emails, phone calls. We staffed the lab for the computer lab registration for benefit enrollment. We did see a really good increase this year to disability insurance, life insurance. We put the new product in place that gave additional options for people to purchase higher limits as well as enrollment in the sick leave bank. So we're very happy about that. All of those products really helped the employees protect themselves financially. So that was a good win for everybody. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Thomas.
Good morning all. Thanks for having us today as always. Lori, thank you for the introduction and I'll echo that. Her team did an amazing job with open enrollment. It's 7,000 people, right? In 30 days. Lot of questions, very important subject matter to protecting their families. So a huge success this year. Continued enhancements of benefits that really are protecting families. So kudos to Lori and to the risk management team. They do a great job. Okay, subject matter for today, tail end of our first year of self-funding. We're going to be talking about your stop-loss renewal. But I'd be remiss if we didn't touch on a few additional. Kevin?
I...
Magic wanders.
No, but I'll do it for you.
There we go. Thank you sir. Okay, so I'd like to give you data through September on your health plan. Just a quick few highlights for your knowledge and edification. So through September, average monthly expense of claims data and overall fixed costs combined is running about 3.7 million. That's good. We're in line to budget. The overall current year-to-date claims and expense ratio is running about 90%. We'll talk about that a little bit more. We've been watching and trending COVID. We've talked about that curve, summer impact. So that's what we'll speak to today. Where really we're targeting that 80% factor. We focus on, of course, everything medically related, but pharmacoe is such a huge piece. There was specialty medications and cost. Your claims are running well. We have a few high-cost pharmacy claims we're watching, but overarching, your utilization still trends to generics and your claims are only up 3.5% year-over-year compared to double-digit increases with the industry. So I think that's a good indication of pharmacy trend. Medical, again, this is statistically skewed. We talked in our last meeting about how last summer, everybody stayed away from the doctor's office. They didn't have their surgeries, right? That was the concern with the pandemic. Well, what happened this summer? Everybody scheduled every surgery they had last year. We expected it. We had a big hit, June, July, August. Actuarily, the expectation is will it plateau and then will it come down? That is the expectation. We're seeing this across all of our clients, across all industries. No surprise, but we needed to stop and come down. I think with the figures we've seen statistically through the Health Department, through the state, we're on that track, right? But medical trend, again, a little skewed this year. Next, a little deeper dive into the projections. We share this screen with you every chance that we get, just to give you an update on how your plan reserve is trending as well. And again, this is really a fiduciary testament to you all as a school district that many districts can't speak to this early in a self-funded health plan. Here's what I mean. So on the left-hand column, you see different revenue expense projections, excuse me, the titling of your health plan reserve fund, requirement for the state, we'll get through that. In the middle column, you'll see in 2021, where are we year-to-date? And then as projected by the actuary on our team, where are we looking to head next year? The key highlights on this slide, ladies and gentlemen, are within your revenue, you're going to see at the top, you've got, well, start with claims. You've got year-to-date 40.1 million. You've got an additional with self-funding, you have fixed costs. So you see all those different categories, stop-loss, admin fees, stop-loss being a key subject matter of today. You've got about 5.2 million in those fixed costs. For a total expenditure in 2021 anticipated through year-end of 45.4 million. You have funded your health plan at a projected 48.8. Again, good stewards of your health plan. Last year, you put in a 4% increase in health plan revenue. You've approved that again for 2022. So here's where we're pleased. We're expected at this year, even with these summer months, based on your funding at a 3.4 million dollar gain to your health plan that you keep all of. Remember, historically, our first year self-funded, I'd like to remind the Board, last year, that 3.4 million would go where? To Blue Cross. We may, in a profit-sharing function, share 50% of that. It's all yours. So there's the key differentiator with self-funding is we have to project it well. You're continuing to be good stewards of that funding, but now it's all coming back to the district to then prepare for strategy the following year. Make sense?
Yes.
So overarching, you see your reserve. This is the historical picture. We always remind each of you, you started with nearly 1.9 million from historical fully-insured profit sharing. The tail end of that calculation resulted in an additional 1.7 million with the projected gain at the end of 2021, 3.4. At the end of this first year of self-funding your health plan, we expect a fund balance of nearly 7 million, 6.993. Huge success. We're on the right track. Right there below, you see what the state requires. Where it has the acronym FLOR, F-L-O-I-R, that stands for Florida Office of Insurance Regulation. Under State Statute 11208, they have a requirement that at least 60 days of your claims liability, we keep in reserves. So your finance team, risk management, doing a great job of that. By the end of the year, they're saying we need 7.7 million. Well, we project you'll end at just shy of seven. Again, as a reminder, most municipalities, school districts, cities, counties, when they do this transition will say, let's point to our general fund to make up this spread, right? Or nearly all of that spread. They don't have the initial starting point that you all have with those reserves. So again, a tremendous success. 2022, we're trying to be conservative. You already have approved a 4% increase, no exposure to the employees. We're not charging the employees anymore next year, but you all are continuing on the right track. The 4% additional revenue in our key assumptions for 2022's plan, however, with medical trends still at a lower point than what Blue Cross and pharmaceutical trend, if you see the key assumptions to the bottom, we still believe we're tracking well, but we're coming closer to a net neutral position. You'll see the difference there as you look at the total claims fixed cost as compared to the revenue of your program, board contributions combined with employees, for about $190,000 light. Again, that's projections. That's an actuary taking an educated, very educated guess. COVID calming down, but I want to remind you that that's going to erode us getting a continued surplus or growth. We don't want to overfund, but the balance here, ladies and gentlemen, is you don't want to overcharge your employees or the district's P&amp;L to fund your health plan. So we're right, we're right, we're finding the middle point. And it's now our responsibility to continue to recommend to you, how do we fund this in the right fashion? But you are still paying collectively much, much less than we have been historically fully insured with Florida Blue, which we take a lot of pride in saying you're succeeding in that regard. Any questions on this data? I know it's a lot at once.
So are you saying we're basically at the sweet spot for this?
We are, we are $7 million ahead of the sweet spot, Reverend Cummings, after the end of this year. At the end of next year, we believe we're at the sweet spot.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Say that again. You say that again.
Okay, so, so Mr. Browning, at the end of 2021, we're going to have a health plan reserve fund balance of just shy of $7 million. Okay, the state says we should have 7.7. No district in my career has ever been that close in one year, ever. Maybe 25% of where they should be. And that's where they point to their general fund balance to make up the difference. You all are almost there.
You're attributing that to...
The history. So over the last seven years of your health plan, this district has done such a good job to where, as we shared, in only 50% of the margin, Blue Cross took the other 50, they kept that in reserves. They held on to it. Ms. Boston Ellis, Ms. Lively did a great job. This Board said, let's not, let's not use it elsewhere. Because for 15 years, we've wanted to be self-funded. So the point I'm trying to make is, we took the leap of faith, changed your funding approach. You're now in control, self-funding your health plan. In 2022, based on conservative projections next year, the state is saying we should have 8.3 million in reserves. We believe we're going to still end right about 6.8 million. But again, that's conservative. We could see COVID fall off tremendously. Continued wellness programs initiatives help. I'm going to speak to you a minute about reduction in breast cancer, neoplasma claims, the success of what we've done in breast cancer awareness and mammography efforts. So the point, overarching, the point is, you all are starting in the first year better than any school board I've ever seen, transition from fully insured to self-insured because of the history and being good stewards of the profits that you've received back from the healthcare.
I'm catching up, but these, these folks got that done. And congratulations, folks.
Huge success. Moving forward. Moving forward.
Find the sweet spot with the pointer.
It's called Kevin.
Thank you. COVID-specific, we've shared this report with you a few times historically. Key, I know it's small in the yellow highlights, the upper-left corner matrix speaks from January 1st of 2020 through October 13th of 2021. In 2020, calendar year in its entirety, there were 1,700 approximate tests, 227 confirmed cases, and they didn't record any vaccines. It was new. I don't believe those numbers are accurate, but they're now catching up. And here's the point, calendar year 2021 through October, 2,600 tests for school district employees and their dependents, 602 confirmed cases through the health plan claim data, of which 2,916 vaccines have been administered year-to-date. You see the spikes in March and April on vaccines. There's a Delta variant hitting. Then you see again spikes in vaccine July and August and September. So I think we're on the right track. I think the district's doing a great job with education, and I also think this is a representation, we're starting to see things taper.
And, and just for clarification, these are numbers of those who went to a private provider or to a pharmacy or somewhere and used their Blue Cross insurance to cover vaccines and to cover their testing.
That's a great point.
This isn't, this isn't Marion County Health Department data or anywhere where free testing was happening or free vaccination was happening.
Only if a claim was filed to your commercial health plan that processed through Florida Blue is represented here.
Thank you.
That's a very accurate statement. And I believe, to your point, this is very understated compared to everything that truly did occur for the district employees and their dependents. Lower right-hand corner, and I'll finish with this slide, I want to point to your, draw to your attention, the second to right column is titled Paid Confirmed Cases. These are categories of claim type that speaks to pharmacy, inpatient, that's IP, speaks to emergency room, professional means physicians. As you look to the grand total, the second to last column, paid confirmed cases of 4.1 million. Again, this is since January 1st, 2020. The effect to your health plan has been 4.153 million in COVID-paid claims over the last 18 months, right? So as an impact of a $50 million health plan, that's, that's still certainly an immaterial amount, proving the point that while COVID is real and it has had a material effect, it has not directly affected through COVID, true COVID-diagnosed claims, the bottom line of the health plan as much as other diagnosis categories. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, stop-loss. This is a component of your self-funded health plan. In the past, we have started on a conservative basis, inclusive of any medical or pharmaceutical claim, that if the district has a claimant or a dependent claimant that reaches a total claim, cumulative claim of $300,000, we have a stop-loss insurance policy that takes the liability off of the district. Think of it as reinsurance set a different way. As we study the first 12 months of data and as you move into your second year of self-funding, in our world, that's called what's coming into a true paid contract. When our claims incurred, Thomas goes to the doctor, I receive care. It's been incurred. When it's paid, however, as subsequent to that data service, the carrier, the provider files the claim, the carrier pays the claim, can take 30, 60, up to 90 days. So what we're recommending to the Board that actually has helped us on fixed cost expenditures for 2022 is you go to a true paid contract. That's what the difference between 1212 and 2412 is there. And maybe more importantly, as we spoke with the actuary, we have increased in the recommendation of your specific deductible from 300,000 to 350,000. Based on your high-cost claimant utilization, those that reach that level, this is an investment of which the savings and premium as compared to the liability exposure to the district mathematically makes sense. So the recommendation of the Board as we transition to a $350,000 stop-loss, which at the bottom board, you'll see we budgeted initially, as you approved 2022's health plan budget, for a 25% rate increase on your stop-loss premium, that was about a half million dollars more in spend. With these changes at the renewal in the right column, it has resulted in just over two and a half, just under 2.5% of an increased percentage on your stop-loss, which is an additional cost to your health plan of only 49,000. So the recommendation here is actuarially sound, we believe, and is $450,000 decrease in health plan spend for 2022 as compared, which will help us. Okay? Any questions on your stop-loss? Okay. So moving forward, how do we do this better? That's what really makes me smile the biggest, is you all have taken the first leap of faith. Now we get to do the exciting stuff. So as we look at opportunities, stop-loss we just discussed, that's one. Well, we, we went with Florida Blue's carrier that they partner with, it's named ISU. And everything integrates, it's very simple. It was the perfect transition to have administrative simplicity. However, I still think there's additional savings on your stop-loss premiums. I think there's another half million dollars we can go find. So we're going to bring recommendations around stop-loss RFPs to the Board for additional savings. Look, another huge effort, as we talked about, cost is pharmacoe. Florida Blue works with Prime Therapeutics out of Texas. They're a great, what's called PBM in our industry, pharmacy benefit manager. There's dozens of those pharmacy benefit managers. And I would offer Prime's a good one, but there's also a lot of opportunity to tailor a formulary for your prescription needs to your district. If we want to run a report of the top 50 to 100 most commonly prescribed medications in the district, what are they? Well, we have that data now. Furthermore, we can go to market with that information and ask for the best price point for that medication for your employees compared to Prime. I will offer to you that there is additional savings in a pharmacy analysis, and that's going to be something we'd like to take a look at for future strategy. And then lastly, it's been really near and dear to our hearts, been wellness. You have got one of the best wellness programs arguably in the country, award-winning, it's changed lives for a long time. The most recent success is mammographies. In partnership with Radiology Associates of Ocala, on Saturdays with Keesh, they have come out in waves. I mean, it is a beautiful event, pink everywhere. It's just fantastic. We always emphasize that in the month of October with breast cancer awareness and a great community partnership, public-to-private venture, that has really proven success. None of our top claimants this year in the, in the most recent claims review have a diagnosis of breast cancer. So it's a tremendous turnaround. We had several of those a year ago, if you recall. So a huge success. It's education, it's access and removing barriers of cost, right, to those employees. But what else can we do? Right, there's more. So I would offer, we're going to continue to look at future wellness strategies, recommend some of those to the district. We've had discussions historically around clinic models. We've talked about a lot of different things. So I won't get into that today, but I want you to know with a wellness coordinator that represents your district, we'll be making some recommendations in that category as well, and we'll have discussion around it. And we want to prioritize that to your, to your desire as we look through it, but we'll give you factors to consider. Okay? And that is all that I have. Any, any questions? I know that was a lot fast. Kevin bet me that I couldn't do that in less than 30 minutes, and I think I won.
Thank you, want to. Thank you, Mr. Bus. Ms. Thor?
Yes, I'm here.
You got anything to say? I know you like the mammography bus, and that was one of your babies.
It's a thrill that it's worked out so well for our employees and the partnership with Radiology Associates has been beyond, I think, our initial expectations in terms of response. And I think that this is an area overall that with Thomas and Lori and Gallagher and everybody else, that we're just hitting a lot of home runs with our health insurance in a tough market. So thank you as always, Thomas.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, Thomas, how often do you come and give these reports? And what is our, our information input schedule, say, for the next year?
We typically do three to four presentations a year.
Okay.
But at, at your pleasure, we certainly can do more or less of those. On a monthly cadence, we receive data from the carriers, and the analytics are performed by our firm monthly and then presented to risk management and then to administration as necessary. We correlate that to your finance team who budgets on your reserve fund to make sure your plan is sound and funded accordingly. And as it relates to your budgetary process each year, we, we follow the mark both on the dollar and the claims utilization. And it's a wonderful partnership. You've got a great team.
Through the superintendent, you're on a regular, you're on a regular information flow basis.
With her team, yes sir.
Yes, with the team, yeah, wonderful. And I love that, love that idea of revenues. Wow. And, and we can learn a lot, you know, from that. Sounds like you're state-of-the-art in terms of that pharmaceutical side of things. I mean, it's just, it's money that's there, and how exciting. Love money.
Thank you, Ms. Browning.
Mr. Browning, so the next work session will be April. The months of January, February, March typically don't see a lot of claims data with the start of the new plan year. So the next meeting will be April. There'll be something shortly after that to go over what renewal numbers look like for the following plan year. And again, strategically, back in November. So three or four dates, as Thomas said. And then, of course, as you talk about some of these other future projects that are potentially on the horizon to compete some, the pharmacy, some of the other products, those meetings will, will be added as needed.
Thank you.
And of course, if anybody feels the need to, to have one in between.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. This is a wonderful example of partnerships with our risk management team, Ms. Lively, that you have just wonderfully, you know, always done an excellent job. Teresa and her team, the Board, we all, Mr. Bus, we all had very good communication of what we faced and where we wanted to go. And I just am very appreciative of our relationship, and it feels good and it's a relief to see these numbers and to also hear that we're, I guess, best in the state with this area. And that's really nice. So I thank you guys for your due diligence and our previous boards too that had just been working along. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
I concur just about with everything Ms. King said. She said it so eloquently. This is a wonderful example of, of great partnership, and I love innovation. And I believe this was kind of where we were headed in this direction, and I love the ideas that you're going to bring to us. It sounds like you already have some concepts of where we can go in the future to increase the money, as Board Member Browning says. So I, I'm really excited, and thank you so much for all of the diligence and hard work that you all have put in, because I know that it, there's a lot behind the scenes. This, this little 25-minute presentation really doesn't do its service to how much work you all put in. So thank you very much. We're very grateful.
And, and I just want to say thank you. Going back to when we were initially talking about this and going down to see the models in Pasco County of the clinic and having those conversations meant a lot to us because I was, I was pleased when we did open enrollment the past few weeks, because I saw options for our, for our staff. And I think that that opens up that competitiveness in the market for us, and we're going to get better prices. You just said it. We're going to, we, we're going to shop some things around. So I'm looking for this to get better and better as we go along. So thank you, Ms. Lively and your team, and Mr. Bus, and Teresa and the finance team. Thank you guys. I'm sure our staff are going to be appreciative of this, because the insurance costs for them didn't go up at all this year. So a lot of positives with this, a lot of positives. So thank you guys. Any, any public comment? Yes, sir. Make sure, Mr. Attorney, make sure he gets a seat. Thank you.
I'm not sure I understand. Name and address? Bob Schmidt, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court, Road of Ocala, SCHMIDT. Okay, just one quick question. Very good job. I mean, I appreciate that. I think everybody appreciates the cost and everything associated with it and what it does to our taxes. Okay? But my one quick question is that I noticed in slide, in the health plan update, 2022 stopgap renewal, I noticed in key assumption on slide three, that the 2022 numbers were a little bit lower than 2021 numbers for projected enrollment. Just a curiosity factor, why was that projection actually lower? Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the question. Great question. We do seasonality and trend analysis over the last 10 years, and there's always a bit of a curve. We'll see some attrition, but it's been very, very level in the district for that period of time. So as we may see retirement of a group, so we've, right, we've got a generation of teachers that we're watching, so the, the expectation is in a, of 90, approximate 90 total employee decrease for next year. Again, it's an estimate. There could be a great opportunity for additional hiring. District doing a great job in that category. We could see that number come much closer to net neutral to where it is today. So it's seasonality of a historical trend factor of enrollment flow over time. Fair enough? Great question.
Any other public comment? Thank you so much, guys, for the presentation. Great job, great job, great job. Thank you. job, great job, great job. Thank you. We're going to have Marion County Hospital District with Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Deborah Bales.
All right, I'm praying technology is my friend today. Good morning, Chair Reverend Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, school board members, Dr. Gullett. And I also would like to thank you all for the opportunity to come here and speak about the partnership between the Marion County Hospital District and the Marion County Public School System. So I thought I would first talk about what it is at the Marion County, how we transformed into what we are today, talk about the six target areas that we cover with our funding. And then at the end of the presentation, we have some gifts, parting gifts, if you will. Uh-oh. See, it's not going to be my.
Try it again.
All right. All right, just a little bit of background about the Marion County Hospital District. So we were created by the Florida legislators in 1965 to oversee public health in our community for people that are underinsured, uninsured. So just to ensure that everybody has adequate healthcare in our community in Marion County. So it is a, the hospital district is a governmental agency, you couldn't hear me, a governmental agency. We're bound by sunshine laws, just like the school system. We are comprised of seven board members that are selected by the Board of County Commissioners. We have one of them with us today, David Coe, who many of you know, because he is a longstanding citizen of Marion County and a graduate of Lakewee High School. As father, your father also worked in the school system. So, yeah, he was a teacher. So we also owned and operated at one point in time Monroe Regional Health, which many of you know as, you know, Monroe Hospital, MRMC. So in 2014, it was determined by the trustees that they did not want to, so they, they're trustees on both boards. So the hospital district's board, as well as Monroe Hospital's board. And so they decided in 2014, it was not beneficial for us anymore to operate in a hospital, the public hospital, where if you didn't have insurance, you were able to go to be seen. And they decided that they were going to lease out the hospital, not sell it, lease it out, which was a very smart business decision, right? And so we had one agency that it didn't work out quite well with. And then in 2016, we leased out the hospital, as well as all the other properties that the Monroe Regional Health System owned at that time. So we were able to get 40 years of that lease funding upfront. So it was approximately $215, $16 million, which, little bit of money, right? You get lots of friends when you get into that, you know, bracket of funding. So with that being said, the trustees decided that we really have to target what areas we are going to be trying to work on, take that funding that we have now earned or got from the lease of the hospital. And so they've taken that funding, and they invest the funding, and we live off the corpus. So we had to decide, what areas are we going to target, or will be able to make an impact in our community? And so with the community health improvement planning, we looked at that study in 2015, and these were the six things that we determined that we could actually make an impact with our funding in the community. So dental, substance abuse and behavioral health, diabetes, obesity, tobacco, and indigent primary care. So I'm just going to go through each of these and kind of give you a highlight overview of what funding we provide in each of those categories at this time. So I'll just tell you about the indigent primary care, because I don't have a slide particularly on that. But that is, we are providing the low-income pool funding to the federally qualified healthcare centers. So for instance, Langley or Heart of Florida, we provide them with some match funding, so they can draw down federal funding, and they can serve an incredible amount of individuals with our match funding. So dental, Freedom Mobile Clinics. Some of you may have heard of Freedom Mobile Clinics, because they actually do appear at some of your schools. They provide, Freedom Clinic provides education into the school system about dental care. So how often you should brush your teeth, they give out these little timers, so you could, they can flip them over, and they can see that, you know, you should be brushing your teeth for two minutes. They give out toothbrushes, they give out all kinds of things. And then they do these pop-up dental clinics all around the county, which is kind of neat, because they go into the most impoverished areas, where there's not transportation. So they'll go out to the forest, they'll do a pop-up clinic. They actually have an office space off of Southwest First Avenue now, but they do a lot of great things in the community, and they're primarily funded by our organization. Langley Dental Bus, that is another one that we provide the low-income pool funding to. They provide dental care. They have a state-of-the-art bus, where you can get all kinds of dental procedures done, your tooth pull, dental cleanings, hygienist, all kinds of things. And they also travel all around the county. The hospital district has also funded a dental hygiene school. I'm not sure if you're aware, but in Marion County, there is no dental hygienist school until CF is in the process of opening one, and we were able to help them and assist them with funding. If you were a dental hygienist, and you wanted to go for schooling, the closest school is Gainesville. So now we were able to bring that to our community, so we have more hygienists that are living locally in our community. I already talked about the federally qualified healthcare low-income pool funding that covers a lot of free dental care. That was a major, major issue in our community for quite some time, is people having access to dental care. And as we know, with dental, it leads to a lot of other health issues if you don't take care of your dental hygiene. So substance abuse and behavioral health, that is a big one for us right now. I've had the pleasure of taking some, a lot of individuals on that tour. So if you are familiar with, it was the old campus for the centers, it's off of MLK and State Road 200. It is a six-building facility, and it is, that's kind of a picture of the, obviously, our sign that's in front of the building. But it's six buildings. The idea was of Beacon Point was, we noticed there's a huge gap and disparity in our community for people to get substance abuse or mental health treatment. Sometimes it's difficult to get on at 60th Avenue to the community-based mental health care center, which is now SMA. So there was an opportunity for us to purchase these buildings and then repurpose it for Beacon Point. So one of our buildings has free outpatient and mental, for substance abuse and mental health. So if you have insurance, you still can get help there. And that is run by Livestream. So basically what we did, we partnered with some of the best of the best in the things that they do. And so we have Livestream in Building 1, so we brought them here from Lake County, so they do the outpatient. In Building 2, we opened up a 10-bed detox facility in August, and we've already had 85 people run through our detox building. So detoxing from opioids and alcohol. So we have, in another building, we have, they're called Peer Support. They're available 24 hours, seven days a week in the community. They get most of their calls from the ERs. If someone has overdosed, they're able to go respond to them and work with that individual, hopefully get them into treatment, get them into the detox center. So they are available 24 hours, seven days a week. First responders contact them. The peers have lived this life, they're in recovery themselves. So it's almost like having a live AA sponsor that's following you around, and it's a model that is going throughout the United States. It's a proven model, and has lots of success of, your best way to get someone into treatment is to link them with somebody that can be their support. So then we have what's called medication-assisted treatment. So the scientific thing about substance abuse and mental health is, especially with the opioid epidemic in our community, is if you give someone a pill or an injectable, it will kill the triggers to want them to do those drugs, those opioids or alcohol. And so it's quite costly. And the injectable, it's just called Vivitrol, it lasts for 30 days into your system, and it literally, if somebody were to try to do an opioid, they wouldn't feel the high. So there's no need to, because it kills those triggers in their brain and chemically and all that. It's about, it's close to 15, between $1,500 and $1,900 an injection. But it is the best way to get somebody into treatment. The success of somebody being into a medication-assisted treatment, and their success is in the 80-something range. And when I started in this field 25-plus years ago, that there was very limited success with substance abuse and mental health, especially substance abuse. So we have that clinic that goes on. We're serving about approximately 150 people there. We plan to increase it, because we provided with the, the center's SMA is now running that, and we have provided them with some additional funding to get the appropriate people, so they can increase that, as well as assisting them with finding alternative funding to increase our numbers in that. And then we also have, like, an access center. So it's very confusing in this world. So if somebody comes on campus, they can start out at our access center, and they can figure out how to navigate all those different services, and they don't have to go at it alone. Does anybody have any questions about Beacon Point? It's one of our largest investments that we have.
Ms. Bales, can you say something about the one end that's dedicated to our former police chief, Chief Gray Graham?
Oh, I.
That's a high point.
That is a high point, absolutely. So Building 1 is dedicated to Chief Graham Recovery Center. And we also have a pond in the back of Building 2, when we have people that are in the detox setting, is a meditation pond in honor of the late Chief Graham. Because his legacy was not to criminalize individuals that had substance abuse issues or mental health issues that led them to the substance abuse. His philosophy was that you get people treatment. You don't criminalize somebody that's in that situation. So we're very thankful, the Chief Graham Legacy Foundation, they actually were instrumental in putting the pond in behind Building 2 for individuals to meditate. I'll also say, this week, we opened up, in our community, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but there were no beds that were available for people that don't have insurance or underinsured, no 30-day beds available for treatment. So when somebody detoxes, where do they go? If they don't have an opportunity to go to treatment. So we opened up seven beds for 30-day treatment this week. So we have a couple individuals that transitioned from detox over to our 30-day beds. Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Ms. Browning?
Yes. Wow, congratulations. This is about as encouraging as anything I've heard in the last year. I mean, this is incredible.
I am very thankful for my job, because we can impact a lot of people's lives.
And having this level of impact. Can you speak, there's some issues that took place during 2021, in terms of ODs and that type of issue. Is it too soon to have any stats on impact that the program might have had?
I think it's too soon, because we've only been in, like, the last service went in the detox beds. Now, there was only five detox beds in our community for people that don't have insurance or underinsured. So we are funding four of those. They still have one at SMA, and now we just added 10 more. So I feel like it's too soon, but I will tell you, I walk that campus several times a week, and sometimes I go into the detox building, and the individuals that are in there are so thankful that that's available in the community. And it's starting to catch on to people in the community, hey, this is a resource that's now available. And it doesn't matter if I don't have a dollar in my pocket, I'm going to get the help that I need. So when we do have those statistics, I definitely would like to bring them back to you.
Boy, I'd love to see them. And it's like you're a real, true, fit-in-to-the-first-responder idea. You're going to a five-alarm fire, and it's time, it's time, it's time, really, to address it this way. This is incredible.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So one of the other things that we did, so the county used to provide, the clerk of the court, the county would provide match to, was the centers, now it's SMA. We took over that financial obligation from the county, so that the citizens of Marion County would not have to feel the burden of that potential tax or whatever. So we took that over. And the first year, we were at about, was it, David, about maybe a million dollars, and a little over a million. They were a little bit underfunded. They were only getting funding for mental health. They were not getting funding for substance abuse from the county. So we were able to increase that funding to them. This year, they'll be getting close to $1.8 million from our agency for match funding at SMA. And because.
Say that number again.
1.8 million?
Wow.
So I think they were getting like $800,000 and $900,000. Do not quote me on that, but close to around that. And we were able to increase that funding, so that more people can get services in our community in that area. I talked about the detox crisis beds that we have, and I will tell you, another piece of this is part of the FANS program, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, is the school health educator. It's been really instrumental in the school system of a position that's funded by the hospital district, that you all employ on your end. She's done a fabulous job in talking whenever the trends of, when you guys have discipline issues within your schools, if it's marijuana, or if it's any, the kids are dealing with overdoses in their own home, she's able to provide that in-person education to them on those particular topics. So diabetes and obesity, we just had, this was kind of great that we had our, you guys had the presentation prior to this, because I don't know if you guys are aware, but the hospital district partners with, not only in the FANS, Fitness and Nutrition in School with diabetes and obesity, but also in our Active Marion Project. So we are part of some of the wellness that is going on within the school district. We just did a, we do it every October, we just did a step challenge in our Active Marion Project. We have kind of a three-pronged approach. We provide free workplace wellness to sites that might not have the funding for workplace wellness. We also have an app, a proprietary app, that was actually developed and designed by a former student in the Marion County Public School System. He was zapped up by Apple at 17 years old from the school system, which is pretty impressive. But this app tracks your steps. You can be in teams with each other. So it's interesting, because South Ocala beats everybody, and it's a global challenge board. They walk a lot at South Ocala, and they beat everybody every single quarter, because we have these step challenges every quarter. And like I said, we just wrapped one up in the school system, and. South Ocala won again? Yeah, they win everything. We just did a step challenge with the Ocala Police Department, same thing, they beat them as well. So it's something to be proud of in the school system. So we also did something in the Active Marion Project, where we do a lot of health education as well. And we did it with their bus drivers. So we had, what was it, 83 bus drivers participate. We did clinical screenings at the beginning. We provided them with education, and we got them linked up with our app and counting their steps. And we did their clinical screenings at the end, and all of them saw a huge difference. And they were, many of them were prediabetic, but they saw a huge difference in their health outcomes at the end of the intervention. So we provided them with free fruits and vegetables, and they were coming for the free fruits and vegetables when we were doing our health education classes with them. And Jessica, that's behind me, she's our director of community health projects, she would watch them walk around their buses while they were waiting to go pick up kids. They were not just sitting on the bus, they live, you know, they're sitting most of their job. But we had encouraged them not to do that anymore, which is kind of neat. So fitness and nutrition in school is one of our biggest investments. A few slides later, we'll talk about how big of an investment it is. But that is our school-wide project to combat obesity and diabetes. So we thought, with this particular program, and a lot of blessing with the school board, and a lot of hard work within the school system, to make this project very successful. And it's exposing kids to fresh fruits and vegetables that they may not have been exposed to in their own environments, from elementary school all the way to high school. High school is probably the most developed, with the greenhouses, especially Vanguard, where they are now producing enough crops to sell them back to the cafeteria, which is kind of a big deal. So if you haven't seen those, the greenhouses or the raised beds or anything like that, we would love to, the staff would love to show you that. The health educator that I talked about, you've got that. And the, somebody that is new to this school year charity, and she does the physical education piece of it, where she is working with all of the PE coaches throughout the county, and really teaching them about moderate to vigorous activities, and ensuring that the kids are engaged in constant activity while they're there. Community Home Project, you guys heard about that, the last go-around. And in the background is, it's not quite developed yet, but this is a model of the Mary Sue Rich Community Center. And that, we invested $2.3 million in it, and we will be providing some fitness. And that, we invested 2.3 million dollars in it and we will be providing some fitness and activity in that as well as diabetes education, hopefully bringing fresh fruits and vegetables, community gardens. And our Active Marion Project, um, also does community gardens. And then the fitness and nutrition in schools, not just in the public school system, we also are in the private schools as well. So next slide talks about our investment in tobacco. Tobacco cessation, tobacco education, number one discipline referral in your area is what? Vaping, right? So can't get, is it, we're hoping that we can assist with that, that issue, not just to be a discipline, but an intervention to assist those kids that are getting disciplined for vaping because it's a very difficult thing to get off of and it is very dangerous. You've seen some of the videos that have come out from the Tetter family and there's more, um, videos to, this week is the Great American Smokeout and some of your, your students at Vanguard High School, they made videos in regards to vaping, which were very powerful. There are 30 second, second videos. We fund, uh, Students Against Destructive Decisions. This was against drunk driving when I was younger, but it is a, a program that is in many of the private schools as well as some of the school system. And they, they really focus on like the elementary education. CivCon is, uh, has replaced QuickDoc. They do a lot of policy change in education. So we've been working with them and the school system on potential policy change, really directly related to, um, vaping. And then we also work with the Department of Health on some interventions regarding tobacco. This is what our, as you could see, in last year, we impacted about 84,000 citizens. This year we intend on impacting more than that. And this year we have about 15 million plus dollars committed to our community this fiscal year. And that is a big deal because that is definitely taking the burden off of lots of, of our taxpayers for a lot of different things in the community. And we are always open to other ideas of things that we could assist with funding and when it comes to those target areas that we have. Does anybody have any questions about that? And then talked about our FANS partnership. This is Jessica Cole. She's my right-hand person over here and she is our director of community health projects. She oversees AMP as well as the FANS program and the Community Home Project. And then we have Jeremy Roden, Chrissy Dixon, Charity, I cannot say the last name, and Barbie Davis. I'd say this is the dream team. I, if, if anybody, we could've handpicked anybody to carry on the message of our FANS program. These are the, these are the greatest ambassadors of the message and things that the hospital district would like to do within the school system to impact obesity and diabetes. So this is, uh, how much we have committed. I think the school board only sees what you guys get from us, but on the other side of it, the hospital district keeps close to half a million dollars a year. You could see in one, in the beginning stages of this, so over the last five years, we've dedicated close to $5 million to this project. And it's, and I think that we are continuing to see the impact it has on the, on your students in the school system. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. I'd like to just, uh, I'm, I'm really impressed with the fruits and vegetable, uh, uh, concept. I, I drilled down on, on, we spend a lot of money, about a half million dollars. I, I see it coming through on a pretty regular basis and it's, it's exciting. Uh, there's, there's opportunities on, in, in many regards, but I would like to, uh, recognize your program and your, your, uh, your board, uh, here, Mr. Cope. If you, I don't know if you're planning on, on speaking, but if he would, if you would stand up just for a moment and just introduce yourself. And the reason I, I say this, his father taught, one of the top math teachers, uh, also, also lived in my home, uh, was an earlier on, on Lake Weir, he and his mother. Uh, and, uh, just a, a tremendous history, but the fruits and vegetables, I'm going to give you a whole series of images. Uh, I have a background in photography and his father with his, uh, buy here, pay here, uh, you're on your honor. He didn't even, you put the money in the can, you took, you counted your own vegetables. He sat on the tractor. So I just wanna, uh, you know, just recognize that the treasure that we have in your family and then you moving on through, through this board, uh, and, and, and look at the good things we're talking about here. And I happen to have prior knowledge just of the quality here and his mother as well.
Well, I'm, uh, honored that you said that about my mom and dad. My dad grew up in, uh, South Alabama, a very agriculturally oriented society as much as many of us did. So he came here in 1955. That was the first year when they built the new Lake Weir High School. And, uh, he always had this, uh, bug in him, you know, after he got done teaching, he was out gardening and he liked the citrus industry in Weersdale. And that's what led him, you know, to have an orange grove. And so when he retired from school teaching, he spent a lot of time in that orange grove and he sold some of it all wholesale, but some of it he retailed in that little wagon you have pictures of.
Yes, yes. And the Presbyterian Church there in Aquana's Club, uh, down that way, just hours and hours. And one of my favorite Democrats, I was the Republican, he was the Democrat. I mean, we had it happening. We had it going on. And it was, it was tremendous. It was tremendous, tremendous. Just love your family.
Thanks, John. Let, let me just say something just real quick here is the, uh, you know, the, the opportunity sometimes to, to make a difference in a, in a child's life or anybody's life. You know, sometimes it's, uh, it's almost overwhelming until you can kind of sector just a few people off and say, can we help these few people and see if the program works? And then maybe, you know, scale it up from there. So it, it's really challenging sometimes and you, you guys are in charge of 40 some odd thousand students in it. So, but you know, this, this one day, uh, a girl that used to workforce, Heather Wyman, invited me to come to, uh, Ward Highlands Elementary. And in the elementary school, she was running this program, we had raised guard, uh, raised bed gardens. So she invited me this day where they were gonna make some sort of a presentation, um, an award. And it had something to do with an art class at the same time. The kids had drawn pictures of vegetables and fruit or something. But anyway, so I go to this presentation and there's these two classes of first graders. And you know, there's just, you know, for the average person like me that never goes to see a first grade class, I was just really kind of blown away by just seeing these kids. They're so excited. But there was like two or three teachers there that day that were probably in their late twenties to the earlier mid thirties that were grossly overweight. And it, you know, I'm looking at these kids and they look healthy, you know, for the most part. I think when I was in first grade, I might've weighed maybe just a smidgen less than them. They may, may, maybe they're not eating the same way I did. Maybe they're watching more television or I hate to say I'm on my phone too much, but I probably am, but they might be on their phone even more. And it's just sort of, uh, disturbing sometimes when you see obesity, how it's affecting our society. And you see it in kids, I'm sure you guys go out to these schools more than I do. You see it in kids some, but when you see in the teaching staff. So you know, I, I, I'm not suggesting that you guys can necessarily wave any magic wand and do anything about it. But you know, I've got a meeting set up with Kathy Bryant, one of our county commissioners soon and, and, uh, I, I just wanna talk to her. Is there something we can do to encourage staff to just, as they were mentioning, some sort of a walk challenge with the Ocala Police Department that they've had some success with it? And I, you know, I, I own this shopping center in Ocala and I got this one girl in there that runs this karate academy. And somehow she discovered this concept of aftercare. And now she's got two, two school buses and I don't know a lot about her business, but she must run this route and pick up students and bring them to her karate academy and teach some sort of an aftercare thing. It's called Martial Arts Center of Ocala. And, um, there's also a charter school in my shopping center called Ocali Charter School. Well, they were struggling with the area to actually have a physical education program at the charter school. They just didn't have an outdoor area. So they made some kind of a deal, hope I'm not getting anybody in trouble here, but they made some kind of a deal with a girl at the karate academy and the girls, and the kids started going down there for their PE. And the girl at the, at the charter school tells me, she goes, the parents were calling her up going, what are you doing with our kids? And she goes, wha- what are you talking about? She goes, well, we, we have to go buy them new clothes because her clothes won't fit anymore. And it's all because, you know, this girl took them down there and got them busy and they're exercising. So, uh, you know, uh, you guys have a lot, I mean, you're Thomas Buss, the first presentation. You've got a lot of other plates in the air to be concerned about financial issues. So I'm not expecting you to drop everything you're doing and go send them all to a karate academy. But the point really is if people get, just get active a little bit and watch their diet a little bit, it can make a really tremendous positive difference in their life. And if you guys can have any influence over that, good for you. Thank you very much.
I got one for you. I got one for you. I'll tell you in a minute.
I just wanted to do a follow-up that I, I really learned something from you all today and I've been somewhat critical of challenges, uh, simply because the way social media works. But I learned and I'm hearing and I, and it, it's all about learning, uh, that properly done, it's a tremendous, uh, thing because I'm, I'm just extrapolating what you're saying and what superintendent's been working on and doing some good things. So wow, very exciting.
Thank you for your enthusiasm.
This is what it looks like. It's a-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And always, every time you log in, they always ask me, do you really want Michael to beat you today? Guess so. Neck surgery. You can relate.
No, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
Okay, thanks. Yes, um, I just want to thank, um, everyone from the hospital district and I've got a bit of good news to share because our transportation department really enjoyed and benefited, as you said, from, um, their cohort and the fresh fruits and vegetables. And, uh, they're asking, uh, when is round two gonna be? So it, it's one thing to, you know, try to do something, but it's another thing to, to be successful. And prevention is what it's all about and, and getting fit, you know? So it's, it's, it's working and I know on behalf of the whole board, we couldn't be more appreciative of your partnership. It's a lot of money that you're dedicating to, to all the right things and, um, can't thank you enough. Appreciate it.
Well, we're thankful for the partnership.
Hi, Sarah.
I, I do have a couple of questions. I don't know if you need to look at the slide or not. Um, thank you, first of all, and I'm excited that we're having this presentation because I, you guys have been given $5 million to the school district and I don't think one of these presentations has actually happened to the board before. So I'm grateful that you all are coming and presenting it all to us. We, we certainly approve it, it, every time the money comes through, but to look at it comprehensively is, is very, very valuable. In the slide that where you had the breakdown of all the different programs and the numbers of citizens that were served, I, I'm just interested in wondering how much of the 15 million investment that you guys are doing this year, do you have that broken down as how much of each one of those pockets of areas is receiving a certain amount of funding?
We do. It's, it's on-
I'm asking for something that's not, sorry.
I don't have it right, literally available in front of me. Our budget and what we've approved is on our website.
Okay.
Um, if you would like further information, I certainly, I know how to get in touch with you, Campbell.
Yes, you do.
Certainly, if anybody else wants that information, I could tell you exactly what we're spending in each category.
Great. And, and so I was, I'm looking at the number of citizens served. I'm assuming a, a portion of that number is, is students, perhaps, maybe, maybe how, how that breakdown occurs.
It is some students, um, but mostly adults.
Okay.
Some students. So that is for last year.
Right.
And that is when some things were shut down and I would assume that that number is going to at least increase by 20% or more.
Of course.
I would hope.
So just in looking at that slide again, I'm, you know, this is all last year numbers, but just wondering how, if there are additional opportunities and in the visioning, ooh, the visioning of partnering in the future, kind of going to the historical commitment, we, we see that. I don't see in 2022, the actual designation for community home, which I know we just had a presentation on, so I think that that is new.
The designation in our budget for community home is half a million dollars right now. That is to employ two physicians for that program and then any additional funding for, if there was rent utilities, uh, programmatic stuff, it's in that budget as well.
Perfect. So as we partner that total potentially for 2022 of the commitment to the district, seeing that I believe we are the partner that will be helping administer that with you, um, the actual financial commitment to the dis-, with the district, I guess in partnership, will actually be more than what is registered here on the 2020. I just wanted to give you all, guys, credit because we just kind of talked through that and approved that, I guess, in the, in the last work session that, that we talked through. Also kudos that we are now in 48 of our schools in 2022. So looking at that, which schools, do we know which schools are still not in that number or are we right there at that?
This school year, it should be fully implemented and into every school.
Okay.
That is, that is the goal.
Perfect.
So those conversations started last school year to ensure that they were implemented in every school.
Awesome. And just, it's not really a question as much as a, a comment, I guess. I, I think that we would just continue to look for opportunities to partner with you on your strategic initiatives. Dental seems as if one, I mean, I know that we have, I, I believe in our, um, community partnership school that there was a dental clinic that came through there. I mean, I think there are opportunities certainly with our students to even enhance that number, maybe their families and, and things like that that we could. But if there are ways that we can increase partnership opportunities, we certainly have access to 42,000 students, including their families and then 7,000 employees, including their families. And that can help, uh, address some target numbers that you're trying to reach as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah. This was a great presentation. Thank you. And as you were discussing them, you know, and I, I was visualizing how this, when it first began and to where we are now and where we're gonna go in the future is truly amazing for our community as a whole. And, um, you mentioned the Fitbit or the, the step challenge. I don't know if you're using Fitbits or not, but I immediately thought of my friend who is an educator and she's lost 80 pounds, but she's also in those challenges because she would like call me that night and it would be like dark and she's like, I'm out walking and I, I'm in this challenge and I'm gonna beat so and so, you know? So with that step challenge is completely working and, and it's on a other level also when we just had our insurance here and, and we know COVID is a huge deal now, but we know that there's some type of link between obesity and COVID and how people recover or not lots of times. So when I think of an initiative to make us healthier as a community, they even focus on other things like that, it's just, um, wonderful. And the FANS club, I remember being at Vanguard High when you talked about that. I think Heather Wyman was there when you just mentioned her and they were breaking ground, you know? And the raised beds, we would visit the little schools for that.
It would do the taste tests with the kids. Once they grow their fruits and vegetables at the end of the quarter, they get to taste the foods and they could say yay or nay.
Yeah, it's truly significant where, I think where we're headed with this. And I know Jessica, we talked a little bit about the food deserts also, and I, I didn't even have any idea until you brought, you know, that to my attention. And so to see creative ways to try to work on, bring on that and the healthy food, not just, you know, going to a convenience store and getting whatever. I, I just, there's so many good things about, um, what you guys are bringing to our community. And anything else or partnerships, I am looking forward to that. So thank you.
And, and I, I just wanna thank you guys for being great, great community partners. When I met you, when I saw you this morning, you was like, you already seen this presentation, which I had, uh, because we had talked about this several months ago, some of the initiatives that you were pushing out. And, um, I think it needs to be known that, that you're doing much, much more than you're alluding to within that community. Not only with our schools, not only with our impoverished areas of the county, even with, um, some of our special needs places like TLC and, and Hillcrest and those, those type of places. So I want to, um, commend you for that. And I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna fire the first friendly shot today because you kind of put us out there on a challenge about this fitness and things like that. And, uh, so I think if my, if my fellow board members are with me and our attorney and super- And so I think if my, if my fellow board members are with me and our attorney and superintendent are with me, we're going to fire the first shot at city council, county commission, the municipality of Donellen, municipality of Bellevue, McIntosh, Reddick. We want to challenge y'all to a fitness challenge that the hospital district is going to set us up with on the app. So all those that's on board, let's get on board and.
You have consensus.
So we're going to do it. Kevin, you with us, Kevin?
You do a video?
So get us, get us the app, get us the app. I'm very competitive and I'm going to say, I don't sound like a, you know, wrestling high school, you know, those wrestlers on TV like to talk a lot of trash. So I'm going to go ahead and talk trash for the district. We're going to win.
Here coming, we're going to actually put, we're going to put those, those tracks here in our boardroom and we're going to be walking during our board meetings.
We've got some water bottles. Make sure we do say, these are for water. Oh, that's awesome.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Before you go, I would like to, I would like to add to the, to the chairman's challenge. This idea of dental hygiene and what you're doing, I got carried away with, with the Kope family, but that was well, well done. But I would like to mention on that and maybe put a challenge in from a scientific point of view, education, and that's really what you're talking about a lot. And there's a thing that we breathe every day called oxygen and it's in the atmosphere. And the bacteria that is in, in dental hygiene is anaerobic. It can't take oxygen. And so I would like to create a, a challenge and have you dig deeper and maybe the superintendent from an academic point of view. We have chemistry folks and physics folks that understand aerobic and anaerobic bacteria and how they can't survive. So you only floss the teeth you want to keep. And it's absolutely every 24 hours, they build plaque that block the oxygen. So if you happen to floss every 24 hours, they can't make it. And that's one of the most exciting challenges and we have the expertise. And when you were saying that, it just occurred to me, the idea within our schools, we could have that challenge going and every kid could understand what's going on. You build a little igloo like that and the bacteria can go mad. You bust that igloo down, I'm sorry, they just don't make it. They don't make it and you keep the teeth you have. It's very exciting. So if, I'll throw that challenge out there. I don't know exactly how we pull it together, but let's do it.
Again, y'all, I'm very competitive when it comes to stuff like that. Listen, we can do a school by school cavity challenge, a school with less cavities, whatever we can do to promote good health for everyone.
We could probably reward that school.
Correct. Correct. So I mean, there's ways we can do things. It's involving everyone and, and even when Ms. King mentioned about our staff, right now, we currently have the 12 days of fitness that's coming up that we all should have gotten information about. So that's coming up. So thank you guys for what you're doing and thank you for, for the promotion that you're doing.
I also like to acknowledge our, our board of trustees. If it wasn't for them and their steadfast and their expertise, then we wouldn't be allowed to do the things that we're able to do on the community. So I'd like to acknowledge that.
County commissioner, we're coming, county commissioner, we coming at you. South O'Callaghan, we coming at you.
I see a video in your future with the challenge.
Kevin, can we do, can we do a trash talking video?
We already have, right here.
We already have.
We need official one. Yes.
We're going to have to have a trophy. Deborah, we're going to have to have a trophy, like a traveling trophy. We're going to have to.
Oh, wow.
Oh, South O'Callaghan, I like so.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Any, any, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. We just have to stop talking to hear you guys.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thor. I'm sorry, Ms. Thor. Go ahead.
No, no, you got me really thinking too. So, you know, when we, when people first walk into the lobby, our receptionist has a stand up desk. So I'm thinking, you know, role model stand up desk up there and whoever's not on the desk, stand up desk right there.
What I'm saying, we need to be walking while we're, wait, my Fitbit tells me often that I need to get up and we've been sitting for the last hour.
My watch just told me.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
You also have shirts.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Wear during your challenge.
Thank you.
First man of fit, Mr. Lawyer, is this all right?
As a community partner, I think we're okay.
And we got, and we got a trash talking video coming out before Christmas.
We've been actually waiting on that for somebody to chat. We were trying to get the chief of police to challenge other.
We challenge him to Balkan, Billy Woods, we challenge all of them. We challenge them all.
Start with the elected leaders though, because I mean, that's.
Thank you. Any, any public comment, any public comment? Come on, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Schmidt, you can't see me.
Yeah, you can't see us.
Again, Bob Schmidt, S C H M I D T, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court Road. I want to say thank you. I think it's important. Education is absolutely important, but I do think, and it's, again, this is my observation on the fly from what I just heard, is that as we move forward with trying to educate our youth, okay, we're going to educate the community too. But those youths are faced with huge challenges at home from a generation that may have started off with a soft or gateway drug. We have to accept the fact that we have gateway drugs and I do hope that as a, as a community, we recognize that, that there is such a thing, okay? And as those youth are faced with the constant barrage of mayors holding up the bag saying, this is okay, essentially what they're saying is that this is okay. It's not okay. I don't imagine that there is a single smoker today that ever started off smoking three packs a day. They probably choked through their first puff. Again, it was the, it was the gateway puff, smoke, two, three packs a day. It happens, it's real. And I hope as a community, we recognize it. I do believe you do and I thank you for all for recognizing that.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Any other public comment? Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming out this morning again. We appreciate the partnerships.
Thanks for your leadership here.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. All right. All right, district, we done, y'all had me throughout that first shot. Let's do this. All right. We're going to continue with our work session from academic services. Mr. Stephen Ayers, one of my favorite folk. Come on, man.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Good morning.
Madam co-chair, congratulations. Board members, Ms. Presspatino, Dr. Gullett. I'm here today to talk about the 2223 instructional calendar. But before I start, I want to let you know that in my department, informally, today is known as School Choice Day because the choice window opened up today for parents to make choices. It's active since nine o'clock and we've already had almost 200 applications since nine o'clock. So when we have our choice expo at Westport High School Gymnasium tonight for everybody to come see the programs in place. So, all right, the 2223 instructional calendar, you should have everything on your laptop, the presentation, as well as the draft calendar that I'll be referring to during the presentation. The instructional calendar is developed in accordance with the MEA contract, school board policy and state statutory requirements. So there's a box that we have to work in when we're dealing with the instructional calendar. The big thing is state statute says we cannot start earlier than August 10th. And so that's our starting point when we look on the calendar. We created a group that created the instructional calendar. The group consisted of district personnel, union representatives, board member, and we met to determine the calendar. The calendar contains 180 student days as well as 196 instructional teacher days. And so that's what is based upon the calendar. And so whenever we talk about instructional calendar, adding days or subtracting days, the box we have to work in is 180 student days and 196 teacher days. The calendar was put out, once we developed the draft calendar, the calendar was put out on our district website for community input. This year, almost 4,000 individuals viewed the calendar, 561 people left comments. The committee did met again to review all the comments from the stakeholders and discuss and make any changes that were necessary. The proposed calendar starts on August 10th. It has a Thanksgiving break, which is a week break from November 21st through the 25th, Monday through Friday. Winter break is Monday, December 19th through January 2nd. There's a teacher work day coming back on Tuesday, January 3rd. Teacher professional development in service day is on January 4th and the students return on January 5th. I want you to notice that when school starts on August 10th, teachers come back Wednesday, August 3rd to provide four days of what we call preschool planning. We did have six days this year, but we had ESSR week as well. And we are going to have ESSR week again next year. So the committee decided to take one of those pre-planning days and move it to January because the issue is if you front load all your professional development, you don't have any way to make any, you know, either correction or re-education at that point. So that's why that, the in-service day was moved to January. Students return from winter break on Thursday, January 5th. Spring break this year, and this is the one that caused the majority of the comments that were one way or the other, is we moved spring break to April 3rd through April 7th. We moved it back, traditionally, if you go back to calendars, spring break was in April. When the FSA calendar came into play, it got moved to March for days with testing. Since the governor is going, doing away with the FSA, we're now going to have progress monitoring, the committee wanted to move the spring break back to April. When you look at the, the comments, and everybody got emailed the comments, there were, if you look at the comments, the 561, there were about 311 of those comments that directly, either directly referenced spring break or said, hey, this calendar is great the way it is. 57% of the comments were positive with the spring break moved to April. So if we look at stakeholder comments, even though we have 42,000 students, only 561 made comments, so you want, you need to look at that issue, but the majority of the comments were unfavorable of moving the spring break. The end of the school year is Friday, May 26th, with the last teacher day being Tuesday, May 30th. The teacher day going, coming back after on Tuesday is requirement because you have to have 196 teacher days. We start on August 10th. We have to have a certain number of days in the first semester to meet hourly. And so that's the way it works out on that aspect. So now, questions that you may have on the instructional calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. I know you and I talked about this a little bit as well. I remain in the position that I'm concerned with an April spring break. I read through the comments. I understand we had a little more than 500, but whenever you think that there was an option for an employee and a parent to contribute to this, we're looking at 50,000 people. We had about 1% of our comments come in. So saying 50% of 1% is still a very, very small number. I also asked, and just for the board, what we did not include in that survey was asking if they were a parent, if they were a parent of a primary student or a secondary student. And for secondary students, I see an April spring break to be quite a challenge, especially those in those high stakes, I'm going to say high stakes testing because even if the state does away with it, we still have the AP, the ACE, the IB exams. And having spring break at, in April just disrupts that calendar quite a bit for those students. So I'm interested to know, and we're not going to go back and survey, but because the numbers of folks without knowing if they were elementary school parents, who this is the first time they're getting to weigh in on this calendar, or if they are those that have had students in the district for a long time, I'm still concerned about an April spring break. So those are my thoughts.
We did have folks from the district office with testing and with principals. And there were concerns raised about that. But the concerns, there was consensus amongst the committee that the April spring break was going to be okay.
Any other board members comments?
I'll take the recommendation. I read that also. I was like, interesting. And I'm glad you gave me those stats because I was like, seemed like it was six, one way, half a dozen another, you know? And I'm going to trust your recommendation because truly, there's never a perfect time to take a week off, actually, you know? So that is your recommendation.
I want to make it clear, this is not Stephen Ayers's recommendation. This is the calendar committee's recommendation.
Well, that's what, I mean, you're presenting it. So the calendar committee's recommendation, I'm fine with that and, you know, thank you.
Brian?
Yes. I, it takes, you know, when you're, when you're involving families and schedules and traditions, it will take some time as things smooth out. We're coming through this situation, the pandemic and we're, there's a lot of things that are going on. So I will just, we'll just move ahead. I'm happy with your recommendation and we just, we just move ahead and, and build off of this.
Ms. Thor?
Right, yes. It's the honor and pleasure of serving on this instructional calendar committee for the last couple of years. And it really is like brokering world peace, you know? But I'll say this, that normally people come out of the woodwork when they're very dissatisfied with a recommendation or, especially when it comes to the instructional calendar because it affects the whole community. And so that's something that we try to keep in mind as a committee is that if we're not getting a lot of concerns, then that probably means that we're pretty close to the, to the sweet spot. It's always interesting to hear what, what people have to say. And I'm really happy that we've got the flexibility now that our governor saw fit to repeal the FSA and go with progress monitoring. We're not exactly sure yet what that's going to look like because it hasn't been rolled out. But I, it has given us this flexibility. And interestingly, Mr. Ayers, you'll remember that I brought up the concept, you know, I've heard a lot in the community of people saying, why do we come back so early? It's still so hot, blah, blah, blah. But if you would, Mr. Ayers, just summarize for the board that question that we did put on the survey and what the response was, which really kind of surprised me because I was like, okay, let's put it out there, you know? Let's talk about starting school after Labor Day and, and see what people have to say about that. Would you explain that a little bit? Because I was frankly surprised that, that's the response.
Yeah, we did. We added a second question to the survey this year that went out for future, you know, considering, would you consider starting school later in September? Meaning that the semester would end after the winter break and we would go into June to get the 180 and 196 days. Because anytime you start later, you have to end later. And there were multiple reasons for that, like Ms. Thor said, you know, with some comments we have that. Also, the schools up north tend to start later and so it causes an issue. And it was almost three to one, a, no, do not start later for other people that, that had the opportunity to respond back.
Right. And while people may complain about coming back to school early, when, when the question was posed, they were like, no, we're good. So you just, when you ask the community, it's always interesting the responses you may get. That was one that especially interested me.
And I do appreciate Ms. Thor because she has made me a convert. I'm always nervous to want to go out and get, you know, seek input because you never know what you're going to get. And, but Ms. Thor always says, that is true. You never know what you're going to get. And so you have to be able to ask those questions and be able to prepare to answer those questions. And we have made changes to the calendar based upon the feedback that we've got in the past, so.
Right. Yep. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. I, I too, I'm willing to go with the recommendation of this committee because I think you guys have put the work in. You've done the, the research to see where folk want to go. And to be honest with you, I, when I was in school, I remember us going back, going to spring break in April. When it moved up to March, I couldn't understand it, but it is what it is. I think it's, I think we just need to support y'all decision, y'all recommendation and follow you. So any other comments? Superintendent, we- So, any other comments? Superintendent, we didn't, I didn't get you. I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you, Chair Cummings. I was going to ask if, if it would be allowable, if Mr. Ayers could at least speak to the committee. We've referred to this committee, but it might be helpful to share who the committee consists of in addition to board member Thoreau.
Yeah. It's board member Thoreau, and it's every director and above is a part of this committee. So, and even facilities is invited to the committee, even though facilities has a different work calendar. But they need to know when schools are in session so they can have input. All three unions are invited and are participating in the aspect of that. And so, you know, we have representatives from one side of the house to the other that all give input on that. But like Ms. Thoreau says, you know, we have a box that we have to work in. And any, there's give and take. You know, you take from this end, you got to give on that end. And it can be difficult. But again, we try to do what's best for students.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Any, any public comment? All right, Ms. Ayers, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are at the end of our work session. Good meeting. Board comments? Attorney Powers?
Nothing particularly from legal, except that as your attorney, I need to advise the board that issuing challenges right before Thanksgiving and Christmas, perhaps ill-advised. You may want to consult with me prior to doing so. So that's all I have.
Point taken. Point taken. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'm very competitive also, so I take that on. That's all.
Nicole?
Just a reminder that your travel arrangements are in your mailbox.
Thank you.
Did you say me?
Ms. Thoreau, yes, ma'am. Your turn.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Yep, I say Chair Cummings, challenge accepted. And I guess I can vouch for the fact that it's worth it to try to get yourself in, in good shape because if my husband had been willing to drive today, I would have definitely been there. The, the only thing that's bad about surgery is when they intubate you. And other than a really sore throat, I'm, I'm doing well. So just being with the team today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. Glad to, glad to hear your voice. We missed you yesterday. And, and get well. Get well.
You bet.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Is there, is there a way of getting that, the volume up just in, you know, in, in the future? And I don't know if that's, that volume, it would help. It, it may just be me, but I'm, I'm having trouble. I was having trouble hearing.
I certainly understand.
I was able to pick it up, but.
It, it's actually on both ends. So Mrs. Thoreau today and whenever you may call in, Mr. Browning, if you all will make sure that you speak clearly and loudly into your phone. It gives us more signal to deal with. What we're at right now with Mrs. Thoreau and her...
Right.
Her voice.
Her voice. That's a great way to say it. Thank you. Is we're, we're at the threshold of feedback in here. So we're, we're trying to pump that volume up as much as we can without you all hearing ringing. It's a challenge for us, but just, it goes well on both ends. So just, we're, we'll, we'll do our best.
Very instructional. I, I appreciate that. That's, that's super technical information because communication is everything. Absolutely. Yes. On another item, just feedback. We are making progress down at Stanton Wearsdale. We, we do have in a crosswalk right in front of the school. And that's, that's a home run in the sense that it's, at least there's a recognition that students and, and things are happening right there. And then on an intergovernmental basis, we're going to get involved. We're, we're going to link up with the county commission, which is, I've just been working with them for a long time on this issue. And just so much tradition goes into old problems. But one of the old problems, and, and I bring this up because tomorrow, at approximately 10 o'clock is going, is the anniversary of the Gettysburg Address. And it's a very important date for me. I got out of the service exactly to the moment, 100 years later, to the moment, which was, how does that happen? Of when President Lincoln was making that Gettysburg Address. And this, this, this school was seven years operating at that time. And right now, we're, we're tackling some issues that existed right at that time. And so it's very exciting to me to see things the way they just sort of come around and, and they, they happen. So that in 2021, we're, we're, we're looking really hard at direct, solid, no difference between this school and any of our other schools, which is, just to me, is incredible. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, just that, that follow-up report. We'll just keep them coming.
Thank you, sir.
As we make progress.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Yes. Well, we will not be gathering next week because we know next week is Thanksgiving. So I just want to take this time to just say that I recognize that for all this year, maybe people are saddened or disheartened, or may have been disappointed with things that have happened. But with Thanksgiving coming, it just makes us realize that truly we have so much to be thankful for. And I just encourage everyone to enjoy your time with your family, your friends, the good food, and be mindful of time. Or I'm just not asking you guys that. I know I'm going to be very mindful of the time that I get to spend with everybody, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member King. Chair, Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed yesterday, and I have a lot more reading to do tonight before tomorrow. But I know that the work that this board is putting into our policies is, is incredibly important to, I was likening it to essentially the constitution of this school district. And so the work that we're putting in, that the work we're putting in behind the scenes in addition to on-camera is, is significant. And so I'm just grateful for the efforts of this board and the diligence in putting in the hard work to make sure that we get it right, that we aren't inserting policy that we don't need and that we are talking through all of the important decisions and discussions. Like Ms. King mentioned, my students said today, "You know, we're out of school all week next week." My children, "We're out of school all week next week, right?" So to all the families out there, you know, children will be home. I know that for some families, that may be a little bit challenging from a childcare standpoint. But for all of our employees and the teachers who will have the solace and the break, I know I've heard from many teachers who are grateful that they can have that time to prepare and have a wonderful celebration with their families. And hopefully this year, they can gather more than they potentially did in the previous year. And so with that, we know after this week, then we also, excuse me, after next week, then we will also be in the Florida School Board Association training together. So we just have a lot of great opportunities with this board, and we put in the hard work to make sure that we are dedicated to what this community has elected us to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Campbell, I did want to, Mr. Ayers mentioned it. I did want to remind everyone that the school choice window did open today. It opens today, and we want to make sure that our families know that, the community knows that the choice window is open, and to try to get out to Westport High School tonight from 5:00 to 7:00 for the School Choice Expo. A wonderful, wonderful way to showcase the different programs at the different schools and the different choice, choices that our students have within Marion County at the different, at the very school. So please encourage folk to get out to the Choice Expo. On Tuesday night, we were all at, at Howard Academy for the reopening of the Black Archives and Museum. Wonderful event. I'm pleased to see the things that are going on there and to, to see some of the programs that's going to be coming out of that facility. I, I really believe that it can be a, a place of higher learning still, even though it's no longer a traditional-type school. I just believe that learning can still take place in archives and, and the museum because I just foresee, as a kid growing up in that community, I always foresee, foresaw that people would be coming to that place to do research on the historical significance of our community. And so I see it heading that way. And I want to thank all those that are, are, have taken the, the charge to make sure that, that that happens. And then the challenge is out. The challenge is out. So I'm looking forward to us doing a, a video, a trash talking video. So if y'all scared to talk, I'll talk trash. I don't mind talking trash. But I, I, I look forward to, in the, in the, in the spirit of competitive, as friendliness, friendliness, with our other elected officials around the county, and let's get fit. Let's just be fit. We've just come through something or going through, coming through something with this pandemic. And I think the healthier we are, the better we are in, in getting through it. Thanksgiving this year is different for me. It has a, a, a different meaning because you all know, last year this time, I had just gotten diagnosed with, and my whole family, with COVID. So we were sick the whole holiday. No turkey, no cranberry sauce, no sweet potato pies, none of that stuff. And, and to be honest with you, it was a, it was a frightening time, not for me, but for my family to know the things that could possibly happen for my family and for you all as my fellow board members and, and colleagues because you had been around me. So I'm grateful that this year, we, it's, it's a new meaning. It's a new life for us and for those folks that have gone through some things. So I want to encourage everyone to, we need the week. We really need the week to celebrate family, to celebrate what we do have. Oftentimes, we often talk about the things that we don't have. But I, I tend to not focus on those things. I tend to focus on the things that we do. And we have so many positive things going on here in Marion County and with our families and, and abroad. So please have a safe, safe holiday. Don't eat too much because we're going to be challenged. We're going to be walking and turning.
They're not tracking calories, right? They're just tracking steps.
We're tracking everything. We're tracking everything.
Okay.
My, 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 my watch, I walk every morning, and my watch tracks calories, everything. So I'm looking at it all. So. But I will digress. I'm on my way to Dundee High School because they're having their Thanksgiving dinner.
Oh, my goodness.
And if you haven't been to Dundee, Ms. Mosby has a wonderful, wonderful culinary group of kids out there. They do a tremendous Thanksgiving meal. So again, thank you all. And if that, with all that being said, any, any, anything else that I miss in there?
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to say, be sure, respect the elderly. As, as we go into these holidays, we have a huge retirement community.
Yes.
And they're somebody's grandpa. And there's all sorts of health challenges that get involved when, you know, as you go along. And, and I have actually tested positive for, for elderliness. And the doctor says he checked it several times, and there wasn't any, any way he could tell, give me any other, any other word.
There's no cure.
So it, it, and it's with several, for old age, and, and there's several elderly complications involved. So, so there we have it. Just respect them. And we've got a beautiful community. And that's where all these beautiful students come from, down through these families. And what a, what a tremendous community we have. And what came here today was huge. And what we did yesterday, I think, was huge, just in terms of what you call the constitution. That is incredible. Tomorrow, if anybody wants to watch in on that, I'll have to do it through telephone, if I'm able to do that, because I have a hard commitment. But it's, it's unbelievable, and we worked hard, this whole group worked hard, taking policy and putting it over into procedure on several occasions. And that is incredibly effective in terms of running something the size of this school district. So with that said, you know, just wow.
Thank you.
Let's go on and, and prosper.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. And to all of our staff, our bus drivers, our custodians, our teachers, have a great, great, great Thanksgiving. Meeting is adjourned 10:43 a.m.